Okay, let's join me in a word of prayer. Lord Jesus, we thank you that we can be here tonight and Lord we ask for your wisdom upon all of the appointed leaders, Lord, all the representatives. Father, give them your sense of leading. Help them to know how to lead this city well, Lord, and to do so in honor of you. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to be here and to be a free people. It's in the name of Jesus we pray these things. Amen.
Amen.
Why isn't this working?
What?
This is, I don't know. Usually it's supposed to have everything up there.
She'll figure it out.
Nothing's on here. Thank God we have this backup. Roll call?
Councilmember Daniel DeGrasse.
Here.
Jake Parks.
Here.
Leo Zubor.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Ristusia.
Present.
Mayor Dean Uecker.
Do we need to go over public discussion again?
Yeah, because you have to do it now that this is regular meeting.
This time is provided to the public to address the City Council on items not on agenda. If you desire to speak, please address Mr. Mayor and upon being recognized, come forward to the podium and state your name and address before proceeding into your subject matter. Anybody? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, thanks for the invite. My name is Chief Reese and I'm with the California National Guard Youth and Community Programs Task Force located at 700 East Roth Road in Lathrop. Here to provide just a quick synopsis of information regarding a new resource to the city of Ripon, and I actually have two products of San Joaquin County with me today. My kid from Ripon that I have in the academy right now is sick, so we have him quarantined and you don't want to meet him tonight. So, but again, my name is Chief Reese and I'm the Recruiting, Placement, and Mentoring Supervisor for the Discovery Challenge Academy, and we are a resource for the at-risk youth in the city of Ripon. The at-risk youth who are behind in credits or at risk of not dropping out, or excuse me, of not graduating on time, the dropouts in the community. So I work with high school counselors, principals, vice principals, with law enforcement officials, probation officers, and so forth to reach out to those individuals between 16 and 18 years old who may not be on the right track, who may be behind in credits again or at risk of dropping out. So these two young men, they can kind of speak for themselves, but prior to our academy, they were not on the right track. And currently, they're in Week 10 of the academy, and so far, the product is great. So prior to the academy, I'm not sure if their microphones are on, I'm going to have Herrera just to kind of tell you his GPA and kind of what his life was like prior to our academy.
Harvey can come up here. Could you please just come up and then you're on the, we're being taped and stuff.
So my name's Austin Herrera. They refer to us as cadets, so I'm Cadet Herrera. My GPA is a 4.0, and before I came to this academy, I was enrolled in school all throughout high school and senior years when I kind of started struggling and I wasn't really finishing my work or staying on track, kind of just getting into trouble, into trouble a lot. And I ended up dropping out actually halfway through my senior year, and so I wasn't able to graduate with my class. And even, I signed up for independent studies towards the end of the year, and I still wasn't able to finish my work just because I had other issues at home and stuff. And I was just a really rebellious kid and I really just didn't care, and when I got this opportunity from a close friend that was doing the same thing as me, first class, he tried really hard sending me paperwork through the program to get me to come here, and so I made the, or I chose to come here by myself. I'm 18 years old. I'm going to be 19 next month, and when I enrolled in this program, I didn't really know what to expect. And after about the first month, I noticed a drastic change in my attitude, how I kind of just approached different obstacles in my life, especially with discipline. Discipline and patience was a very hard thing for me to learn, and now it's all coming naturally for me. I see myself, I never thought of a future for myself. I just thought, I just was the normal kid that was like, I don't want to go to college. I don't, I mean, I just didn't really have anything for me. I didn't know what I wanted to be. But now I have a whole, I have a whole, they helped, they helped set us up with P-RAP, which is a post-residential action plan for after this program. And now I'm more determined ever to start off after I graduate from here, go to MJC in Modesto, and do the nursing program and become a nurse through that. And just also with the service to community that we do, I really want to just get involved with more of that when I get out of here, and being a leader and helping others. And they've given me the opportunity to be able to join Student Council, which I thought was a very big step in being a leader. I actually am a secretary for our school. There's the president, vice president, obviously, and then me as a secretary, and I believe six representatives, and that was something that really helped me get more motivated about myself to being able to accomplish tasks that needed to get done and hearing other, being able to hear other people's issues and what I can do to change it was a really big thing in my life that was like, this is a step to take. I felt like it was a step that I needed to take for myself because it was very, I didn't think I could do it, but now I know I can do it. And this place gives us a lot of motivation and drive to do what we need to do to get done.
So that's just one story, I'm going to share one quick, one last story with you and then I'll close out, so.
Hello, everybody. My name's Christian Galletto, known by the academy as Cadet Galletto. So before coming to the academy, my GPA was a 0.7, and I struggled all throughout high school. I'm currently a senior, but going into this academy and going through the school system there, I now have a 4.0. It's an A in all of my classes. DCA has really taught me how to cope with my emotions. I always found myself like getting lost while trying to do homework, always had these distractions. DCA has really set aside all those distractions so I could focus on what's most important: self-discipline, education, physical excellence. The program itself is challenging, but if you make it past the first two weeks, there's things called phasing. And acclimation phase is the hardest. They teach you the standards and what is required by the program, and after that, it's all just to help you out. After the first two weeks, you go into red phase. Red phase helps you cope with emotional distress, it helps you academically, and then white phase, you get privileges such as like you get more time to do stuff, you get more personal time, stuff like that. All in all, the program is a one-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I had the opportunity to join it last year, but I didn't take it too seriously because I thought I knew everything and I could just make it through high school, slacking off, not doing my work. And it was kind of like a last option thing, but realizing that I was messing up and that I would have no future doing what I was doing, I applied for this year's cycle, and I just got to say, it's changed my life, really has. I see things in a different light, I'm thankful for everything that I have now. There's no other way to put this rather than if I didn't come to the program, I don't know what I'd be doing right now. I'd probably still be lazy, sitting on my butt, not doing much. And the service to communities really makes you feel good because you're giving back to people that help you out. It's just a great program in all. There's nothing bad I can say about it.
And I'm not paying then. So in closing, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to come and speak. My information is on the screen there. I would invite anybody in the community, the Chief of Police, any of your officers to come out and see the program for yourselves. We're located at the Sharp Army Depot there in Lathrop, but we are a resource. You know, the students who are truant, that are not in school, they're out in your community doing something probably not productive. So we are a resource for your community. The good news is, after five and a half months of the residential program, these students come right back here to your community with their heads on straight, with more resources to be employable, to more resources to get enrolled back in their high schools, to do better in school, more resources to get enrolled in a two-year college, and be productive citizens. We get all of our funding, 75% of our funding comes from the federal government, 25% comes from the state. There's no cost to the families for tuition of this program. The only thing that the families would have to pay for is a small packing list, but we have a nonprofit foundation that covers all of that if they cannot provide. It's a bipartisan issue. We have Congressman Jeff Denham on our Youth Challenge Caucus as well as Congressman Jerry McNerney, so we have bipartisan support because the youth of our nation is a bipartisan issue. So thank you so much for your time. Please write down my information, but if there's any questions, I'd love to answer them. Sir?
Do you, I take it you have a website?
Yes, sir. Most commonly, on Facebook now, we do have a website. It's discoverychallengeacademy.com. However, if you look on Facebook as well, you'll see more updates of current events and pictures and so forth.
Well, what I was wondering is, could we put that website on our website so people could come to our website and then go to their website? Is that something that we could do?
Currently, we don't have any secondary websites, but we could definitely look into seeing things.
It sounds like a great program, and I would like to say hoo-ya to you two young men, and congratulations. The Vice Mayor would like to say something like that?
I would just like to say something, Warren Officer. Thank you so much, and the presentation really is, I mean, you can spend an hour and can't get everything out to everybody, and the presentation you made to us before was great about asking for volunteers and all that, so I would encourage anybody that's really interested to know more about the program, get ahold of Officer Reese because it's an amazing program, and we had 20 people in the room and nobody had heard about it before, so that's why I invited you, and hopefully more people will know about your program. So congratulations and thank you.
Of course. Thank you, sir, and that's my goal, is to make as many people know about the program as possible. And the last thing that I can offer to the city of Ripon is those community service hours. So Chief Police, I know that there is always a need for community service in the area. I will show up with an army of 135 young men and women that are just ready to work and ready to give back to the community that's supporting them. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Nothing's changing again.
Now you're down to minutes?
I know, but I'm trying to follow this thing. Approval of the minutes?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second, if I can figure it out.
I got it.
Passes with a 5-0. Approval of the agenda as posted?
This is where I give, make my list, right? Huh? She has them all.
I know, but she's still on.
Oh, I have a few items to pull. You ready?
Yes.
And last but not least, 1.4C.
Mike?
I have one to pull, 1.2D, please.
Which is in between any. Well, do we, so that...
Now we can move to approve the agenda as amended?
Yep.
Yes, the one we have is a multiple.
Oh, what'd she say?
They're still working.
Yep. They're pulling them all off.
Yeah, but we can vote on the...
No, 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 you don't want to screw up the system.
Yep. Trish will get mad at you.
No, because she controls too much.
That is true.
You can come back.
Well, in the meantime, I guess we can, why, Chief, why are you wearing a suit today?
Because he looks good, that's fine.
I didn't say he looked bad!
I'm always aiming to impress, Mr. Mayor. Anything I can do.
And I am impressed, by the way. Thank you.
Doesn't take much to keep the horn.
I'll be impressed when he doesn't wear a horn shirt one of these days.
There's got to be a committee to put him on.
Okay, she's ready.
I'm on it.
Okay.
All right. I will move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Oh, I gotta...
Yeah, you gotta click the button. Mike's gotta click his button.
Why hasn't everybody voted?
We're waiting on you.
Okay, pass with a 5-0. Okay, well...
Now we do the consent agenda as amended, right?
Right.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
I'm waiting for my mover box to show up. There it is.
Shoot.
Hey, that's right. How come you got to move it?
I didn't even get it.
I didn't mean to, so I thought you had already clicked it.
I know, but I voted, but I didn't get to put it in there. Okay.
Wait, wait, wait.
Now we go to the items?
No, but she hasn't done her thing yet.
Motion.
1.2...
No, 1.1B.
Well...
Well, wait. Is the vote done?
Yeah.
We are? Okay. 1.1B. My only question is, when I looked at that report, the numbers didn't add up. Did that get fixed?
Yes, we're working with Waste Management. They inadvertently had some of the numbers on there from previous, the previous franchise fees they paid us, so we're working with them to get that.
So should we not approve this and it'll be on next month?
The dollar amount is correct, it's just the information, I think that was in the left-hand column. So the dollar that went over in one column matches the amount that we received from them, the other does not. So we're just going to get the backup fixed, so you can still approve it.
The first column had one set of numbers, the second column had a different set of numbers, and then underneath where it was how much we got reimbursed, the numbers were the same.
And that's the amount that we received? Yes.
So regardless of what the top number said, we got the right amount of money?
That's correct.
Okay. I just, because I couldn't make those work. Do we do these as we go then? Approve them?
We can do them all together.
Okay. Unless, yeah, okay.
1.2A.
Yeah, Mike, what is that? I mean, we're paying somebody $10,000 and what, what's, I don't remember that coming to us before, did it?
Yes, it did. Provost in Pritchard is preparing the urban water management plan, so this is a requirement by the state of California to be updated every five years for water suppliers of our size. So it's just a document we use to make sure there's enough water supply to meet the future demand of the city. The other thing that's important about this is in 2009, the state passed a law that requires cities to have a certain amount of water conservation, is different than what hap, what was required during the drought. The law in 2009 stated you had to have a 20% per capita water reduction by 2020. So this report will document what our conservation is and help us make sure we're meeting those state requirements.
Okay, so at the time we get the report, we can find out what the 20% is of?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll wait.
Okay, do we want Mike to do his 1.2D because it's in between these two?
Yeah. Okay, I'm pulling 1.2D only for the fact that I ought to bank a Stockton and get paid, and so I want to recuse myself from voting on this.
Then let's take action on that one separately so that you can abstain from that vote.
Can we do that now?
Yeah.
I'll move that we approve 1.2D.
Second.
Great. Okay. Mover.
Jake, stay out of my...
I'm out of here. He likes stealing.
Passes with a 4-0 with abstaining from Mr. Ristusia. Okay, moving on, 1.2E.
Is the $22,000 the total cost that the city puts toward the library? I realize that it's for five more hours, but all the other hours, the county library system is paying, we're not putting anything towards that?
That's right, for the operating portion. That's right, that's our entire payment.
All right, I just wanted to make sure.
1.3D or C? Oops, sorry, jumping ahead.
Okay. Which one was it? I think this, I guess what I'm going to do, this is a request for future, this, when I read, this is transferring money from various places into the Street and Roads Fund for stuff we do that's not, is indirectly street and roads, in my mind. It's for like striping the streets, changing signs and all that stuff, correct?
Yes.
I get asked all the time by people, what do we do with that money? And I know Ted has given us reports, we fixed X number of potholes and changed Y number of signs and stuff, but we can't tell them where we did it or point it out to them. At some point, it would be nice if we got some sort of a summary report. I don't care how many potholes we fixed, it would be nicer to know where they were fixed. In other words, did we do four blocks on some street and straightened it out so that we could send people to some places to see that their money's actually doing something? Because that's the question I get. The streets look like crap. What are you doing about it? His people are out there working and I can't send them to places to show them what they're getting for. I'd like to be able to do that.
It might be even nice to get some pictures, too.
Yeah.
Get some before and aftershocks.
And I think that if you look at the biggest dollar amount that we spend on street runs and roads, it typically goes into the project we bid out, the slurry seals and the overlays.
And everybody sees that.
Those they see.
But you tell them that like a quarter of a million dollars is going to the street, to the patching and stuff, and they're saying, and what are we getting for it? I'd like to be able to say, well, look at this, look at that, look here.
Right. We could take the words that we put in a map, or the words that we supply and put it into a map. We're switching to a new work order program that should make it a little easier to track that. Right now he's tracking up the potholes, but with this new program, we should be able to track location also that that's happening.
Thank you.
1.3D.
Just a minute, I gotta turn my page. As I understand it, this resolution is adding a street project to the budget to satisfy the state so we'll get some of this new SB1 gas tax money. Is that right?
Yes.
Are we wedded to that project? I mean, this is for the future, like later in 17, 18, or...
Yeah, this was actually scheduled in our 18, 19 capital improvement program to be, to be constructed. We added it to...
Okay.
The budget this year to get it in there, to start receiving that funding, but we're not limited to that project. Any project that's eligible, that fits within the guidelines of that money, we're able to change and use it as our priorities change.
Do we have any idea yet how much money we're talking about from that SB1 thing?
Yeah, we've got, it's 8... For 17, 18, we're looking at $100,000 approximately, and then 18, 19, around $266,000. And then we're probably, we're anticipating that's probably going to be the norm going forward, that 266 number.
All right. But if something worse comes up, this just opens the door so that we get the money. We can be flexible where we, what we do with it.
Yeah, as our priorities change, we can change, yep.
All right, thank you. Does, did we do some due diligence with this company? I mean, we're, $28,500 is a lot. Do we have a reasonable chance of getting a grant or two out of this?
This is a hard one. We've submitted a number of grants in the past by different ways. We've done it in the past as staff, and we've put grants together and we're not successful. We have hired consultants in the past, but those consultants were engineering-type firm consultants. Again, not successful. This is another chance, this is someone who probably has probably a little bit better grant writing and strategic background in doing that, but even that being said, it's still a difficult thing to get grants, especially for a community like Ripon that is not delivering water, that has exceeding nitrate limits. We're not a disadvantaged community, it just gets harder and harder to score higher on these type of projects. So it is an effort to go and try to do it. I think we went back to the One Voice Trip, that was some of the comments we were getting, like have you recently applied for these grants? And obviously, the answer at that time was no. So this was a little bit of a follow-up to the One Voice Trip, but again, a new company that may have some different experience than what we've tried in the past. They were recommended to me by another city manager, and they've had a positive experience. I don't know if they got a lot of money out of it, but they were impressed with the strategic and the knowledge of the grants that this company provided.
And since this is for water, is it coming out of the water fund?
It would come out of the waterfront.
Okay.
Can I add on to that? Because I was going to pull that, then I read further. If we don't get a grant, we don't pay anything, correct?
No, we do.
No, you're going to pay.
Oh, because the way I read it was, if they get the grant, they're successful, we pay. We pay it anyway?
We pay their, we pay their fees to compare the grants. The $28,000 is what we would pay.
Yeah, that's not the way I read it, thanks.
Well, yeah, because there was, there was a chart in there, and I think I asked you a question, because it seemed to be that their fee was somehow tied to the amount of money they were applying for.
That's correct.
But I didn't read that you didn't pay it, it just looked to me like the more they asked, they tried to get, the more you had to pay them. Is that the way it works? That was why I asked that question about, well, how much are we asking for?
Elizabeth actually worked with them on their fee, so I'd have to go back and double-check that, but the number in there is the number that they proposed to us that we would be responsible for. And they may have looked at those grants and figured out how much we'd be applying for already.
So if they apply for a grant, for an example, up to $10,000, we pay them $1,000 whether they're successful or not? Okay, I was assuming that was if they were successful.
Right, successful or not, but you're right, now that you say that it does, I think it is, was the size of the grant that they were putting in. And these are both extremely complicated grants, I think that was the other part of the discussion with this firm. They're both take a lot of effort in putting these together. I know when we did it as staff, it was a lot of effort.
Okay.
And if council wants to pursue one of them rather than both of them and see how it works out, I mean, that's a possibility, too, but...
As far as the grants go, I think there probably is a lot of opportunity, or a better opportunity right now for going after grants. And I know I've talked to you before about talking with Peter, with SSGID, I spoke to him today, and it sounds like they have maybe some other ideas and thoughts about how we maybe, or could pursue it with the incentives that they have right now, so maybe, I'm fine with them going after grant money, this is probably a good option. We're going to need the money one way or the other to, no matter what the project is, but I suppose it's probably worth having they sit down with SSGID and see what their thoughts are on how we could accomplish some other things, they maybe have some incentives as far as bringing other people into using that they didn't maybe think about before, so...
That'd be great.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with doing it because getting that surface water has been on the radar in this town for 20 years, and if we, you know, if we can get it, we need to do it. And I just wanted to make sure I understood what was going on.
Okay, are we done with that? We can now vote on the balance of the...
I'll move that we approve 1.1B, 1.2A, 1.2E, 1.3C, 1.3D, and 1.4C. point three C, one point three D, and one point four C. Oh, I gotta hit my, where is it? Oh, I gotta get my arrow out of there. Got it.
Passes? Well, four oh, Mike was away, must've been sleeping.
No, he could vote on that.
I'm just going by with the screen set. You must not have voted before.
I was getting ready to vote, to vote out.
Do we need to redo the vote? Because he, I, I, I
Set away.
Yeah.
I'm abstaining from one, I'll go away on either. How do I choose the vote?
Yes or no?
Yeah.
Fix it, okay, I, I hit the button, he, either he went too slow or I went too fast. I'm not sure what actually happened.
Yeah, you're still looking for the mouse.
Okay. With that, that's the end of consent calendar, and we will open up public, public hearing? Or, you wanna do what first? Wanna move on to the discussion item? Okay, we'll, we're gonna pass to and go to, uh, discussion items, um, accept the donation. I guess the P D chief, you're handling this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, honorable city council members of the complex. Uh, it is my honor tonight to bring forth a request to accept, uh, an, an amount of fifty-one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars in donations to the police department uh, to purchase a new and fully outfitted patrol unit. Uh, some background on this, uh, in July of twenty seventeen, a local businessman and community member, Mr. Rick Van Unen, uh, contacted me, uh, and provided an opportunity for local businesses and community members to make contribution and, and show support uh, to the police department. Uh, Mr. Van Unen expressed, uh, his awareness of our department's aging patrol fleet and inquired about our department's strategy for implementation and replacement of its current vehicles. After a brief discussion, um, Mr. Van Unen advised his, or expressed his intent to raise, fundraise enough money to make the purchase for a fully outfitted patrol unit. Uh, at that point in time, he, uh, took it upon himself, uh, to secure the over fifty-one thousand dollars in funds from our, uh, business, local businesses and community members, uh, to make that purchase. Uh, those funds have been, uh, had provided to the city, uh, to make that purchase. Uh, with the only condition that, and the intention of the new vehicle purchase would be in addition to any planned future purchases of patrol units, and would not supplant the city's current strategies for replacing its aging fleet. Uh, and I do have, uh, Mr. Van Unen in the audience, if you'd like to ask him any questions or if he would like to make any comments.
Um, I, I would just like to say thank you. Um, it's amazing, you know, that a citizen and citizens and businesses in this community, I guess it really does show you what type of community we have. And, uh, I just, my hat's off to you and all the donors. What, you want to say something? Go ahead, Mike. I don't see it up here.
Yeah, sorry. So, um, all I wanna say is that I, I didn't know Rick before this, and I don't think he knew me before the First Responder Appreciation Day that we put on, and, um, you're such a valuable asset to the community, Rick, the things that you've done, the thing you brought to, to my committee, uh, the things we put together, and you're just an honorable person, and you don't stop. And I, I just think that you should get a lot of credit for doing this, you just continue doing all kinds of things that a lot of people in the community don't know, and I think they need to know that, because you're, you're a good person for doing it, and the community certainly is, um, um, doing well because of it. So, all I can do is thank you.
So, we need to vote on this, right? To accept the, or no?
Check already cleared, isn't it?
But don't we have to accept the donation?
Yeah, we do. I will move that we accept the donation.
Okay, well, let me get my computer going, here we go. All right, Mike. I didn't. Ever again, okay. And it passes? Well, dang. Leo says yes, but he was too slow.
I can't differentiate between the moving box and the yes box. By the time I figured it out, you took it away.
Yes, because you're usually the mover, you never have to worry about it.
I know, that's what I said, I'm trying to.
We got it.
These, Dean's effect, if he doesn't close it out, he'll forget what to do.
I was afraid you were gonna vote no anyway, so that's why I did it.
I, I mean, I really wanna thank Rick for what he's, for what he's done. I just have one comment, and that is, I hope we're careful about the timing for the purchase of that vehicle, because we've been working on spreading them out so that we don't have a bunch at the same time, all hitting the, the end of life at the same time. We got six of them from two thousand and four, which means at some point, we're gonna have to triple how many bu, cars we buy in a year. So if, and we've already bought three this year, and maybe if we're gonna buy two next year, we buy, add his to the list and get three then, but I just don't wanna saddle the council with a problem ten years down the road, where all of a sudden, we're right back where we were when I first got on the council, and that is, we had a bunch of cars all at the same time that were falling apart.
Yeah, I think, uh, City Administrator Warner and I have sat down and tried to strategize the, the best way to replace the fleet, especially when we had so many cars purchased in two thousand three, two thousand four. Uh, part of that was due to the take-home car program, some of that was due to the increase in police officers hired. Uh, but we've really tried to, to stretch the, uh, implementation of the new patrol vehicles at two per year. Some of those, some of the dates for the years of the vehicle don't actually match the year purchased because of model years and so forth, when, when those orders are made. Uh, we've tried to do two per year, there was one year, we did do three, and that was an administrative car that the lieutenant drives. Uh, but we tried to do it the best way we can, and I'm more than open for any suggestions on how we can, uh, displace the burden, uh, out, uh, for future, not only chiefs of police, but city council.
I have no prob, uh, that's my point, I want the program we've been operating under to continue, because it is, it's spreading them out so that we're not gonna have that problem, and you're doing a good job. I just want you to keep doing it.
Okay, moving on, we're, we're moving back to public hearing. Uh, Community Development Block, Brand and Home Program, I'm gonna guess that's
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. Um, this is a public hearing tonight, and there is a recommended action in the staff report for you, but, uh, as you recall, last meeting, we went through some C D B G projects and priorities, and the council did have a desire to actually reallocate some of the funds that we had allocated for an alley project to, um, I think resurfacing the parking lot at the senior center, and finishing up some handicap ramps and sidewalk, uh, areas over there, uh, on Pine and Elm, off of Pine and Elm over by Ripon High School. So, those are the two projects that, uh, we've reallocated the funding to, and, um, that's what's in the staff report this evening for you to, uh, to, um, vote on this evening, is to reallocate those. And like I said, this is a public hearing, so you, we do have to open it up to any public comment.
Anybody from the public? With that, we'll close public hearing, city council. Any questions? Everybody wanna make the motion?
Accept who is recommended by staff.
I'll second.
Hit the button.
Be patient, Tricia.
It, hey.
Who was it? You did that?
The mayor.
I did it, I'm in charge, dude, remember that?
Remember, you're within arm's reach.
I got lectured, I got lectured by Lisa before that I should be controlling the vote, not them, so that's why, yeah, I just got a little quick-handed. Okay, moving on. Let's see.
Boy, you're gonna have to get
I remember, dude, I got the hammer. Modification to the recycling facility, is this Mr. Zubers' report? Well, I thought this was Leo's report. Okay, I'm sorry, Ted, I didn't wanna take your firecracker away from you, go ahead.
Not a problem. Um, for you tonight, uh, as most of you are aware, the, uh, city of Ripon runs its re, part of its, big part of its recycling program is, uh, ran with a partnership between the school district and, uh, American Recycling, our recycling center located at the Nestle's parking lot. Um, we've been running it for quite some time, it's been very successful. Uh, as part of that, we've, uh, last year, we diverted five hundred and thirty tons of, uh, recyclable material, including cardboard, newspapers, glass, uh, lots of other, other items. Uh, in the partnership that we have with the schools, parent, uh, parent faculty clubs, uh, they've raised between, uh, they raised between fifty and sixty thousand dollars a year, um, you know, uh, taking care of the facility, uh, compacting the cardboard on the, on the, in the evenings and on the weekends. Um, currently, the program has gotten so successful, so large, that we're having a tough time, uh, keeping a handle on it. We need to modify it, uh, add a new compactor, uh, increase the size of the storage area, um, for the, uh, the cardboard. And, uh, so part, part of that, the modifications we're proposing is to purchase a new compactor, uh, that, uh, has twice the hopper capacity, along with a conveyor system to safely load the cardboard into the container. There's some, some can, safety concerns with the, the operation, um, as it's, uh, as it's, uh, handled now, with potential of, you know, somebody getting hurt, this would alleviate that by having a closed hopper and, uh, the, uh, conveyor belt to safely remove the cardboard. Um, we'd also need to upgrade the electrical service to three-phase, uh, service to accommodate the new compactor in the new location. Um, the proposal is to really relocate the facility to the west end of the Nestle's parking lot and reconfigure the layout to improve traffic, uh, circulation. Um, we've got a, a plan, um, that's part of the agenda, uh, it kinda shows the proposed layout, kind of conceptual proposed layout, but, uh, we, we believe that, uh, with, by fencing it, uh, we'll be able to get the circulation, but also, uh, by gating it, we'll be able to close it off at night, uh, which will help us with some of the illegal dumping that we've been, um, experiencing out there.
Would you, uh, I, I'm, I'm looking at this, would you gate the whole facility or just the drop part?
Just the back.
She would say slatted fence?
No, keep, go the other way.
Oh, okay, okay, I see, all right, yeah, okay.
The plan is to have two, two gates, uh, for the circulation, we have a one, one way in, one way out, to help improve the, uh, operation, uh, the logistics of, of the whole, whole process, relocate the bins so they're all in that area, um, uh, close, uh, open it up at seven in the morning, uh, try to close them at ten o'clock at night. It seems like that's when a lot of the illegal dumping happens, is at night. Uh, we're also, also proposing that we, um, uh, install high-definition cameras that are linked to the city's, uh, police department's, uh, camera, um, citywide camera monitoring recording system, so that we can have access, access to, um, access to those, uh, cameras and the recording devices, so that we can, we can easily, we don't have to go out and pull them out like with the, the, uh, the camera system we have now, so. We're, we're recommending to the city council, um, that they approve the modifications. The cost, uh, estimated cost is a hundred and forty-six thousand, um, seven hundred dollars at this time, uh, that's our, that's our proposed, our, our estimations. Um, the, uh, the school district, we've, we've talked with the school parent faculty groups about, um, partnering with the cost of the compactor, which is approximately fifty thousand of that, a hundred and forty-six thousand, um, uh, because they, they have, uh, uh, they're gonna benefit from it because it's gonna work faster, uh, and, uh, help them out, possibly even gain more, more, uh, more money from, from their end of it. So, um, that's all I have.
What was their response?
I agree. The proposal is, and they've accepted it, we had a meeting with the P, parent faculty club representatives, is to split the cost. City would pay twenty-five thousand, they would pay twenty-five, their contribution would be spread over five years, five thousand a year, that would just come out of their proceeds and come back to the city.
That's a good idea, I like that idea.
Yeah, so Ted, I, I have a que So, this is taking up that whole back, isn't it? I mean, this is a huge area.
It's, it's not the, not the full back, uh, portion, but it's about, about a third of the parking lot.
But I mean, it, it looks like it goes, it goes from where like your glass bin is now, all the way to Second Street, the way it looks.
Goes to the overpass.
Yeah, the overpass.
It's all wasted space.
It's a whole back space, no, I think that, I think that's great, because now we have better parking up front for the, uh, multi-modal, so, this'll clean it up. I, I, I'm glad to see that, and I was kinda concerned when we talked about timing, because I go there three times a week, and you're saying seven to ten, that's, I think that's plenty of time, and weekend's the same thing, correct? Because that's when a lot of people go there, so, yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Leo kinda answered this question, but, you know, I've been out there several times, and when it's overpacked, and you got kids up there on top of piles and piles of cardboard and, you know, and well, and they've even slipped into the machine, and it, it's very dangerous, so with this new proposal, the safety is gonna be much better, I hope?
Oh, yes, uh, this, this should alleviate any potential.
The new ma, the new machine, if you are familiar with the machine that's there, three sides have a beveled edge on it, the new machine, all four sides have a beveled edge, a person can't get in there at all. And that's when he was talking about the, the conveyor belt, there will be a conveyor belt, you'll load it on the bottom, it'll be hauled up and dumped in.
Yeah, well, that
And in order for a person to go in there, the machine has to be turned off, and you have to open an access panel, and, and so, but I don't think we're gonna have a problem, because the problem we have now is the opening is smaller than some of the cardboard. The new machine is literally twice as big, the opening, so that even a refrigerator box will fall in.
So, I mean, realistically, we're lucky nobody ever got hurt out there. You know what I'm saying?
There, there have been a couple.
Couple calls.
It's been with, with adults.
The people that are actually working it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a, you know, it's a safety issue too, so, you know, we can, if we wanna justify it, I mean, anyway. Okay, so, uh, we'll call for a, a motion on that, or are you guys done talking about?
I'm okay, I make a motion, we have brothers, I, I like the plan.
I'll second that.
Don't close it yet.
Okay, you guys, you gotta vote. Otherwise, I'll cut you off.
Don't do that, it's frustrating.
Well, it says right there, all votes have been cast. Why didn't I just read that? Sorry, Dan.
Well, there's quite, there's quite a few reasons why.
Daniel, uh, five oh, passes five oh. With that, we'll move on to bicycle pedestrian and safe routes to school program, and, uh, that must be Chief?
I know, that'll be me, James, Mr. Mayor.
James, is it safety guy? Okay, sorry.
It's the guy that paints lines on the street.
Mr. Peace.
All right, so, at the end of this month, the S J cog board will officially announce the, uh, competitive call for projects for the Measure K Bike Ped Safe Route to School and the Smart Growth, uh, Smart Growth Incentive Program. There is a total of nineteen point eight million dollars in funding available through that program, and that's for fiscal year seventeen eighteen through twenty-one twenty-two. Um, and in addition to that competitive call for projects, the city will be receiving approximately fifty-three thousand dollars in non-competitive funds, um, and that's just population-based, allocated every two years. Um, these non-competitive funds can be used for, um, any eligible project within the program, uh, or you can use them as leverage for, um, any one of the competitive grants that you may be going after. Um, I won't run through all the examples, um, of the type of projects, but the majority of them are improvements to existing bikeways and walkways, um, safe route to school, um, projects and, uh, improve the safety of children, um, secure bicycle parking, um, projects. Um, you can see the number of those that, that are there in the staff report, uh, educational programs. Um, the final guidelines for the program, they're expected to be adopted by the cog board at the end of this month as well. Um, since I wrote this staff report, there actually have been some changes, um, to the, to the draft guidelines. And, and one of those changes is, um, that the city would receive approximately twenty thousand dollars in, um, grant application assistance, so we'd be able to put that toward a consultant to help us with, uh, the writing of this grant, or staff time, uh, to submit with the application. Um, also, the, the cog staff is recommending that four of that nineteen point eight million dollars, um, be allocated toward municipalities with a population of less than two hundred thousand dollars, this is just gonna kinda make us a little bit more competitive with, um, Stockton. Um, those projects do have to be under five hundred thousand dollars, though. And then that application deadline, which in the staff report shows as November thirtieth, has been pushed back to December fifteenth. So, staff, we identified, um, an eligible project that's, uh, currently included in our city bicycle master plan. master plan, it basically closes a gap in our class one bike path along Stanislaus River. The start of the path is on the west side of the Highway ninety-nine, it's right near our sewer ponds, the path would go along the river, and then underneath the railroad crossing, and underneath the freeway, and connect into the paved area, just, just on the west side of the freeway, or east side of the freeway, close to where the bike bridge is currently located.
Is it going to go along the existing dirt path that's there now?
Yeah, there's an existing dirt, kind of rock path, that we would just go do.
Kind of dangerous, but I ride that, yeah.
Yeah, we'd go in there, do a little bit of grading, and put asphalt in there.
So it'll go underneath the?
Highway.
Highway and the railroad, yeah. I mean, I go there anyway, but it's just, people have made their own trail, because they've driven down there so much, that, that's, that's great. You know, I'm looking at this diagram here, though, and it shows these dots, that where the proposed is, but I can't really see them on here, or where they're going to add that on, it looks all solid to me.
I'm glad you said that, because I said the same thing.
Is that the first exhibit or the second exhibit?
Well, it's the one that's.
The legend that has.
The one that has the whole city map on there, it's all solid green, I couldn't see any green dots.
Yeah, those are, those are dashed, if you were to zoom in, you'd have to zoom in quite a bit to identify.
So they're included in what's already there, I was just trying to see where they were going to add on, and where we.
It's basically from here to here.
Yeah, that second exhibit I put in there, I changed the colors to show the green area as the, not to be constructed.
See, it's going to be the green, so it starts over here, and then goes over.
On the second exhibit, you have, we're showing the, sort of, the part in the park behind the Army Corps Park there, the yellow line, and that's showing up as existing class one bike path, part of that is paved, part of it's not, right, the upper, or sort of northeastern portion of the loop, the loop part is not paved. So, are we talking about paving the whole, the entire green between the connection to the bike bridge, back to Stockton, by the sewer ponds?
Yeah, it, what we want to do is to pave that entire green section that you see there, that would be.
Even the loop on the east end?
Yeah, if, if, yes.
My recommendation, I guess, I don't know, sort of like your, your last part of natural oak trees and things, and it just kind of seems strange for me to pave all the ways through there, I mean, if you're, if you really want to get from, say, Stockton Avenue to the east side of, northeast side of ninety-nine, you're going to go up and take the main street road, if you have a road bike, if you, I mean, if you're really using it as a, you know, safe pathway, I'm assuming that's probably the way you're going to go. My opinion is, the area down along the river is more of a nature trail, and you're just going to take in the scenery, and I think it takes away from that if you pave that section, is my opinion. I would rather see it as an improved gravel, or, or, sort of similar to what's up in the upper part of the Army Corps Park there, versus being paved all the ways through there. Or if you, or at least leave the, the most southernly portion down in the oak trees down there along the river, as just a unpaved portion, if you.
Yeah, we could, we definitely look at doing that, just connecting the paved areas, and not kind of continuing that loop around there.
Yeah, at least to leave some portion where you can just walk through, and not have bikes zooming through at thirty miles an hour, just to leave it a little bit more natural. Yeah. That'd be my only suggestion.
Any other questions? Call for motion.
Well, I gotta, this proposal will be under five hundred thousand. Didn't I say it was, see where the estimate was, like three hundred and twenty thousand or something?
Yes, right now it's three hundred and fifty, we would, we would want to use that non-competitive portion as leverage, that would just help us be more competitive with this, the more non-grant funds you use, you obviously score more higher.
Yeah, I was at a committee meeting yesterday where we talked about this, it's sort of non-competitive, but it is competitive, because there was a lot of discussion about set, setting some kind of minimum score you're going to have to get, in order to get funded, because the last time they did this, it turned into sort of a giveaway. They had X amount of money and Y amount of applications, they happened to be pretty much equal, so they said, fine, here's your money. And there were several of us who said, you keep doing that, pretty soon nobody's going to send in an application, it's going to put four numbers down and take their chances. So, I'm glad, I was glad that they're giving us the consultant seed money, because we, this is a good project, and we need to go after it, and I think it's got what it takes. My other comment, though, is this, what, this nineteen million dollars is the first of three chunks of money that are going to come out between now and probably about twenty thirty-five, because there's sixty-five million dollars out of Measure K that has to go to bike and ped, and so far, zero has gone, and so they have the next twenty years to spend sixty-five million dollars. This is twenty, leaves them forty-five to go, so we're going to get, get shots at this at least two more times, and I hope we'll start thinking about the things to do in town, by looking at what other cities do, and that sort of thing, to try to get some of this money. Because in my own mind, things that I've seen and heard, we might be able to do some things downtown, we're going to have to get creative about it, but we need to start thinking about it, because we're going to get some, there's going to be some more shots at this.
Bike paths all the way down Stockton?
Well, I don't know, and the other thing that we talked about, and we're going to have to talk about it at the board level, is, right now, the rule says, the whole nineteen point eight million is available, and if cities under two hundred thousand don't manage to qualify to spend all four million, that four million goes into the pool for the over two hundred thousand people. The discussion came up, why can't you hold it back, so that you create more incentive for the smaller towns? Now, by smaller towns, just so everybody understands, all the towns in Santa Joaquin County are under two hundred thousand, except Stockton. So that, what that basically means is, the only town we don't have to compete with is Stockton. But the idea is, if, if you want to give them a shot, don't keep taking the money away when they don't apply. That didn't get resolved, but it might be brought up at, at the board level. So in other words, if two million dollars worth of applications come in, next time there'd be six million dollars available for the little guys, rather than the four. So, we need to get in the mode of thinking about this, because it's, it's out there.
Okay, call for a vote, for motion.
I'll make the motion to take staff representation.
I'll second. Be patient.
I am, I'm waiting, I got it down now. Well, you guys are getting, see, you guys are getting nervous now, you're voting faster.
I know, you did a good job there.
There you go, okay, with that, moving on to reports, Chief?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Council, I just have two brief items. I'm sorry that Mr. Van Union had to leave, but I wanted to personally thank him for donating the money to have Rob Pincus, from Integrity Consistency Fitness Training, come to the police department this, this past week, and provide training to eleven of our officers over two days. During those two days, it was a defensive intuitive firearms defense, over six hundred rounds of pistol ammunition, and five hundred rounds of rifle rounds were fired down at our range by each officer, learning new techniques, and honing their skills with their firearms. The second thing is, just to bring it to the public's attention, we put out something through our community outreach programs this afternoon, but we have had a sharp increase in auto burglaries, and just last night, we had eleven in our community. Just to put that in perspective, in twenty fifteen, we had nine for the year, and twenty sixteen, we had thirteen for the year, and so far this year, including the eleven from last night, we've had twenty-six for the year, and with still three months to go. So, we're just encouraging people to be aware of their surroundings, secure their property, not in their vehicle, but in, in their homes, not leaving anything of value inside their vehicles overnight or for extended periods of time. Most of these burglaries are occurring, other than last night, in commercial areas, at restaurants, or public areas such as parks and so forth. Last night was a little bit of an oddity, but we still want people to be aware of their surroundings.
Okay, moving on, Mr. Ted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just one, one item, want to report on our water usage for August, we were at seventeen point six percent reduction compared to two thousand thirteen, and, which brings our average, our twelve-month average, to thirty point one three percent. The city, city staff continues to monitor groundwater levels, the groundwater levels are actually coming back up, just in the last three months, we've raised a half a foot on an average, across, across the board.
Thank you, Mr. Ken.
Yes, I have a couple items as well, as you all know, the affordable house at four thirty-nine South Acacia is finished up, the last invoice was on the consent calendar this evening, it is actively up for sale at this point, we are accepting applications for qualified buyers, that actually comes to a close on Monday, the eighteenth, at five thirty PM, we'll be accepting applications up to that point, we will then review them to make sure they do qualify for the house, and we will be holding the, actually, the lottery drawing for that house on Thursday, September twenty-eighth, at six PM, I would imagine here in the, in the council chambers will do that, so we will select probably a total of five buyers, because sometimes they do fall out, so we'd move to the next person on the list, so that should be closing up here at the end of the month, I would imagine a thirty-day escrow or so, so that should be being occupied. And a second item of interest that the council might have, is we do have a couple housing projects that are in the North Point area, that will be coming before the planning commission, the October meeting, and then hitting the city council at the November city council meeting, so, I have a couple draft development agreements that are being finished up, and you guys should see those shortly here, I'll get those out in an email to you guys, so you can kind of go through those, and if you have any questions, feel free to give me a holler, I'd be happy to answer any questions on those for you.
These new developments are going to be subject to the, no, the ten percent affordable housing requirement, right?
Correct, and they also are subject to the three percent growth cap that you guys have in place.
James?
Yeah, just quickly, I wanted to update, the Stockton Avenue parking lot project is moving along, we're anticipating that we should be parking in about two weeks back in the parking lot, so.
You guys went quick on that, that's, that's nice.
I was over there every day hounded, and that's why.
Well, thank you, Dean.
We'll say I did too, out there.
Except the week I was in Arizona.
But you called in.
Just a report, yeah, just a quick report out on the closed session health prior to tonight's meeting, the council got information from their benefits consultant on health and dental costs for next year, and gave direction to staff on that item, and then the council discussed, assuming lead agency status for the proposed diamond pet food expansion project, and gave staff direction on that item as well. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I have nothing to report.
Oh, darn it.
Nothing to report?
Darn.
Nothing.
Come on, say something.
I've said enough.
Okay, good. Daniel?
I always have something to say. I was at the SSJID board meeting today, and Sam announced his retirement, so, that was interesting news. Yeah, we've been waiting for it, I think, for a long time coming, but it finally happened today, he's gonna, he'll be officially done in March after his three or so months of accrued vacation time are used, but he's gonna probably be done with actual work by the end of the year, so, just a heads up there, and then, as always, thank you to the members of the public, you're here to listen to what we have to say today, thanks.
Vice Mayor? I would just like to make one comment, for the last two, three years, I've been getting, you know, yelled at by citizens, you know, about the drive over the overpass, you know, what does that overpass actually cost? I drive over ten times.
No, the first street.
Second Street Overpass? Is that what it's called? Main Street Overpass, so anyway, now that it's beautifully fixed and working well, I haven't had anybody call me and compliment me on what a great job we did fixing that.
You should call them and say, did you see what we've done?
Yeah, you know what I'm saying, you get it, it's kind of a joke trick thing, but, you know, obviously it's Caltrans, but anyway, with that.
They did do a good job.
Well, and they did a great, it's really nice, I was shocked. Okay, oh.
We have to close?
So you have to.
Close?
Close out, and.
And how do we do, how do you do that?
Can't we just do it without the silly thing, we only have one thing to do? Orally?
Do what you're told, Leo.
No, it's no fun. Wait, what do I do?
You close out.
Do I close out here too?
Where's close out?
You just close out, that's all, I don't know, I don't know if I'm doing it right or not.
What's my thing?
Where in the heck's that little button for? Young lady, are you from Ripon High? Where? Oh, Lincoln in Stockton? Oh, and you're here for your government work, for school? I was wondering, because.
Now we got to worry about what Stockton thinks about us.
You came all the way over here to go to this meeting?
So she got vented, she figured, you know what, they'd get done in an hour.
The council, the council meeting is actually over, so now we're moving on to another meeting, so you're really done, if, if you want to go. Not that you, we're kicking you out, since you're the only person here, but, all right. Okay, did you fix me already, while I was doing my gossip?
We're rolling.
All right, okay, so.
What's this?
We'll open the Ripon Redevelopment Assessor Agency meeting of Tuesday, September twelfth, roll call, Lisa?
Director Daniel DeGraff. Jake Parks. Leo Zuber. Vice Chairman Mike Rissucha.
Present.
Chairman Dean Uger.
Here. And public discussion.
How come he says he's absent? Everybody else was present, but Dean showed absent.
I believe you're looking at the minutes.
Who's running this thing, me or you?
Seeing, hey, seeing nobody from the public, I'm going to not read the public. So approval of the minutes?
So approved.
I can't pick up the vote.
Where is it?
It's not on, it's not working.
The girls are.
Ah, there we go.
Oh, there we go.
See, now that wasn't my fault, whoops, now I hit it probably wrong.
I already got it, I'm done.
I'm going to vote no one anytime, just to see what happens.
Only got Jake, Mike.
Blow the chairman's mind.
Well, maybe it's just.
Did you vote?
What? Something's wrong.
Yeah, and then everybody else, Dean, have you voted yet?
I've voted three times. I didn't hit the close, I don't know how that happened, okay, five oh passes, all right, now we are moving on to.
Consent.
Consent calendar.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Oh, wait, give me my thing, I.
They're not.
Oh, I was going to be like, wait a second, I know, that's not how this works, Daniel.
Motion to adjourn.
Did we vote? We don't need a motion, the chairs, they just on it, go bang, we're done.
If Dean would get on it.
Ooh, that hurt my ears, I think Daniel's getting a little cocky for his time over there.
Should we just leave it here?
Yeah, so just give me a text tomorrow.
I got something first thing, but I should be done about nine.